Lay out our goals for fiscal year fifteen, sixteen. So that will start the budget process. I'll distribute the budget calendar at that meeting. And again, an agenda, formal agenda will go out tomorrow to the Department of Commerce, the Commissioners and the media and sunshine list and whatnot. So just make another note, Tuesday, January twenty-eighth at twelve thirty, right here in the boardroom.
And Mr. Man, you did mention this, but we're just making sure, I know that meeting is open to the public and the meetings can certainly be there. It's just time we have to discuss, as you said, the year past and where we're going in the future, the whole perspective of our county manager, he puts the budget together and that kind of thing. So I hope you can be there. Good shield in there. With that said, let's all stand and serve the office.
Yes, Senator Beenhart. Yes, Senator Beenhart passed away this past week. Former County Commissioner, later made the county chairman, remember that?
Mr. Beenhart, stop after this, West Creek, Tate. If it is, then take your leave.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under our public hearings, we're going to do it this time, we have none. Under public comment, we have, let's see, Randall McCall, Randall, where are you at? Yes, sir, Randall, come on up. Thank you, want to address the board yet, just coming out of the front here, we'll hear you. And Randall would make some comments about the noise ordinance. Or proposal.
Well, I wasn't really prepared to say anything. I just came to listen and see what's going on, and then if it did come up, there might be something to say about it, but I'm not in favor of it. So I thought that's what you moved to the country board, was to be, do what you want to tell them young ladies. Be, you don't mind if other people not too late at night or anything like that, but yeah, I'm not, I'm not with it.
But like I think everybody on this board is probably in agreement with what you said out there. If you notice what was said in the paper, none of us, I don't speak with other board members, I can speak for what I said. I'm not for a noise ordinance, I'm for a nuisance ordinance. And you said that in your comments, not somebody bothering somebody, not that kind of thing. That's what we're looking at. And at this point, there is no ordinance. We simply pass this back to the planning board. They are putting together something, the sheriff's meeting all in that, Mr. Shields is on that committee, but, and I think we'll be, can't speak for the whole board, it takes the majority of this board to vote for anything. But I don't think we'll vote for anything that's a quote noise ordinance. I think we would be more likely to vote for something that would be a nuisance, someone who is deliberately bothering the mayor by doing that. Exactly. But at this point, there's nothing to discuss with the county board. All right. Now you go on to the board relations.
Pardon?
Now you go on to the board relations.
Yeah, I didn't get to say it like this last time.
Randall, I was saying, probably recommend, if your interest goes to the next planning board meeting, which they had one today, so next week will be.
Is it the same?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Plain County Health Center, I'm on the general.
Okay.
But I'll recommend.
Four o'clock. Four o'clock. Because at this point, there's really nothing to discuss at board level, so I don't have anything in front of us. It's with the planning board if you want it. And Mr. Man, if you'd like to address it, contact it, make it known that meeting is being held. They're discussing. It's open. Okay.
All right. Discuss him the night.
Chris McCall, thank you for your comments. Anybody that was coming to speak to the board that didn't get a chance to sign over, we always try to recognize if you still have to speak. Here's nobody. Any adjustments before we approve the agenda? Start down here, Pauline, if you can add.
I'd like to add item under reports, investigations, and then we'll debate briefly concerning the making of the.
Sorry, sorry, adjustment. Okay. Then. And Christian Beale. I know A.C. of a year report on what we found out in Washington last week, that secure rule.
Chairman under nine D.
Yes, sir.
Got some additional work I need to do on that. If you want, possibly we should roll that over.
You want to strike that?
Roll over and consider maybe up on the twenty. I don't think it's going to be a big eye on that.
Okay. Striking out of nine B from the agenda. Okay, getting up front. Here. Chester, we should do the same. Okay, if there are no other changes, do I hear motion to approve the agenda as amended? Motion in second, in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda stands as amended. Moving on to number eight, we have a proclamation recognizing Macon Valley Nursing and Rehabilitation Center. And I do have a copy of that. Mr. Man, do you have this, or who has this? My cat's got a copy of it. Should be, I've got it. You'll be reading this. Okay. If you'll bear with me, just a minute, this is a proclamation. Whereas Macon County Board of Commissioners, North Carolina and Macon Valley Nursing and Rehabilitation Center value the health, safety and welfare of all our citizens in Macon County. And whereas every day, every day the staff of Macon Valley Nursing and Rehabilitation Center make a positive impact by providing quality healthcare to people of all ages in a diverse healthcare setting through rescue care, short-term rehabilitation, long-term care, and whereas the nursing home workforce represents a variety of individuals with diverse backgrounds from our immediate community, we are local folks providing healthcare for local folks to enrich the lives of our citizens in Macon County every day and contribute to the dynamic culture and economic prosperity of our town, county and state. And whereas Macon Valley Nursing and Rehabilitation Center started on a journey with the American Healthcare Association in two thousand eleven, making a commitment to quality and achieving the status of bronze in October of two thousand eleven. And continuing on this pathway, most recently were awarded the status of silver award achievement of quality in October two thousand fourteen for continued progress in the healthcare journey. And whereas there are over sixty, thirty-six thousand nursing centers in the nation, Macon Valley, a rehabilitation center with one of seventy-seven facilities nationwide to be recipient of the silver award status, and under one of three for the state of North Carolina. Now therefore it be resolved that we, servants of Macon County Board of Commissioners, who hereby recognize Macon Valley Nursing and Rehabilitation Center for achieving this milestone, wishing them the very best in the next step in the journey, going for the status of the gold award, acts on same quality. And I present that to you, and entertain a motion that we approve that. My permission. Motion in second, in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. And Mr. Johnson, the folks in here, Denise Allen. And the director. Yes, sir. We recognize you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board of county commissioners. My name is Richard Brady, I'm the administrator of Macon Valley, and we'd like to thank you for recognizing us tonight for our accomplishments that we have made over the last several years working towards a self-care journey with bronze and silver. And we remain committed to achieving the gold status. And just like, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Thank you. We do have, Mike, we have two, this proclamation, one of these comes in for them. If you'll give us just a minute, we'll have that signed all five measures. Take that. That's it. Appreciate it, really. Congratulations on that achievement. A.B., this is not a, Mr. Tate asked me to put on the agenda. Just full disclosure, the timeline of this particular item, I'll just say over, over a year ago, Commissioner Tate and me privately, we had a conversation about this particular item, and we both thought it was worthy of discussion as far as county line between Macon and Jackson and Commissioner Tate discussed the details. He's brought it to our attention, has done the work on it. And I agree with him, we also had discussions with the county manager, and they have had some discussion. It has not come before this board until tonight, but we felt like this was the time I had a discussion with the county manager several days ago, had a discussion with Commissioner Tate, and felt like it was time that we make this information public. And so I'm, I spoke with Commissioner Tate, who was going to discover this, to sort of give us a little background information, and then, Mr. Manager, if you would, give us a little bit of background about what you does so far, and then we'll just give us a question.
Thank you, Chairman. As a lot of you know, I have been working on this Jackson, Macon County issue primarily in the Highlands area for some time. For some of y'all that don't know, one of our two towns in Macon County Highlands, there's a large portion of the town of Highlands that sits in Jackson County. Well, actually, one of the town commissioners approached me and said that, I'm making this number up, so don't quote me on it, but he said he had approximately ten acres of land, and he was getting taxed for eight acres by Jackson County, and he was getting taxed for five acres from Macon County. He said, he gets taxed on thirteen acres, but according surveys have only got ten. You go to the bend of Jackson County, you're already with them, and it's like, no, this is where the county line is. And you go to Macon County, Macon County's like, no, this is where the property line is. So we started digging a little bit further on it, and we started looking at the county line around the Highlands area. If you go back to your science classes, it kind of looks like a double helix. You look at Jackson County's website, and it goes this way, and Macon County's, and they overlap, and they follow each place in some ways, but there's a big overlap. Well, just being in this particular area, the neighborhoods of the Bowery Road, the Honesaw Country Club, Colles Asia Club, Wildcat, you can imagine, there's a lot of tax value and money there. So we, as a board, came together and recognized this a couple of years, I guess it's been about two years ago, we passed a resolution to send to the state, and so did Jackson County, recognizing that there was a problem, and we asked the state to come in and kind of determine where this county line issue is, where is actually Jackson County, where is actually Macon County, look into a line. Hopefully, by the time you come to an agreement on it, and then it was going to be settled. Well, about a year ago, some insurance ratings in the Highlands area, in the Colles Asia Club and the Wildcat area forced the issue of a substation for the Highlands Fire Department. These two clubs, as well as some other members having another, other presence of a particular community in both Macon and Jackson County, offered to build the Highlands Fire Department a substation. Well, when you get a substation close to your house, your insurance rating's on your house, drop dramatically. So all these people are looking at going from a nine or a ten insurance rating down to about a five, so it makes sense for them to do this. Well, I, as a commissioner, started looking into it, and I was like, yeah, this is great, they're going to be paying for it, but Macon County residents are going to be paying to staff it, pay to put the trucks in there, paying for the bills, et cetera, moving down the road. And this substation, about fifty percent of the risk of res servicing is actually in Jackson County. Well, then, one and one started adding to two, and two and two started adding to four. I started looking at the other services that we provided. And this is when I kind of handed it over to our county manager Derek, and I can't commend him enough for what he's done with this. His staff is especially Warren Cave, so I hear he's worked on this. He's put a lot of time into it as well. I know you can't see this, but I'll pass it around if anybody's interested. There's about, approximately three hundred and thirty-two parcels that are in Jackson County that are landlocked, basically with forest service and Macon County properties. So the only way you can get the Jackson County properties is to go in through Macon County and through Highlands with the insurance going to clubs, et cetera. All of these properties that are in Jackson County have a Highlands phone exchange, seven eight seven or five two six. They all have a Highlands zip code, that type of thing. So we started doing a little more digging on it, and again, the fact out there is approximately three hundred and thirty-two parcels. Based upon Jackson County's current tax rate, we estimate that they bring in approximately one point, you want to take? One million, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in property tax revenue. It's Jackson County. The Jackson County. But Macon County, we're their primary fire department. We handle all their nine-one-one calls, primary EMS, all their trash comes to our landfills. They also, I can tell you just firsthand, they also use our school system, our recreation facility, et cetera, because it's just closer. It makes sense. So we wanted, I wanted Derek to go through and kind of put a number to this, and see what it was costing us to service these people. What we came up with was about a hundred and sixty thousand per year, based upon the figures that are Chris Thaw and Solid Waste and Warren's come up with. These are just real rough numbers, but based upon what other Macon County residents are paying based upon the tax values of these homes in Jackson County, again, about a hundred and sixty thousand. They're collecting, well, whatever, a million dollars, one point two million. We're spending about a hundred and sixty thousand as a good neighbor, which is the right thing to do. I mean, one of these houses catching on fire, I think it's right for Macon County to go, go put it out. It makes sense, and we're the closest people there, and one of these people's having a chest pain or something, I think it makes sense for, if you're Macon County, to go take care of them, because we're closer. If you send an ambulance and cashers to one of these houses in Highlands, it literally, if traffic's good, you might make it in twenty minutes. If it's bad, it's going to be about forty-five minutes. Whereas Highlands could be out at the Bowery Road in less than five minutes, our EMS base. So it makes sense, but, so presently, again, Macon County, our taxpayers are paying to provide the services for these residents in Jackson County. But Jackson County's collecting tax revenue, so Derek exactly sent Jackson County manager an email explaining this to him, hoping to initiate some discussions on how it might come to a problem. I'll give you my, I've been on this for a long time now, and slept on it, and I've been thinking about it a lot, and I haven't talked to a lot of all the board members about it, but my personal feeling is that Macon County needs to do the right thing. Macon County needs to continue to provide these services, because it makes sense, it's interesting, health, safety, a lot of other reasons. But it also makes sense, and it's the right thing to do, if Jackson County compensates Macon County back for what we're standing there. And it ought to be some real interesting discussions, maybe for the board. That's kind of what I am.
I think you tipped now on the head, Commissioner Tate, and to echo what the chairman said, this process that was initiated by Commissioner Tate, which started as the county line issue, a larger issue, and if we started digging into it, the services that Macon County was providing to these properties started coming to our attention, and again, as Commissioner Tate mentioned, three hundred and thirty-two parcels, and according to the Jackson County Tax Department, these parcels of property had a total value of four hundred and forty-five million dollars, roughly, that's building and land. Pretty soon, you start talking about real money. And anyway, we have, we, I have sent an email to the Jackson County manager, and we look forward to having discussions with Jackson County and finding a resolution to this issue. It's been ongoing for, for years. It's just never been, nobody's ever pursued it until now. And you hats off to Commissioner Tate for that, and we hope to, we hope to resolve this and continue to provide services, but as Commissioner Tate said, be compensated for those services that we provide.
If anybody has any questions for another board member, happy to try and answer.
Since you had a state survey done, where does that stay?
We're still waiting on the date.
You haven't begun, or where are you going to do it?
We're waiting on it to do it. But the, my understanding is the gentleman has been assigned our task. I'm not afraid to say, I heard he kicked the can down there for about a year, and then he retired.
Thanks, one more question.
So we've got a new, we've got a new person that's been assigned to the new gentleman.
Doesn't Jackson County currently provide some compensation?
They, they give Highlands Fire Department about seventy-three, is it in here, thirty? About seventy-three hundred dollars per year.
I knew it was very little, but I knew it was something.
If you took, while you're on that, if you took the fire services alone, you know, if you took our, the Highlands rate, which was point zero zero nine, four hundred dollar valuation, which would pay for the Highlands Fire Department, it would come up to thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. We're presently giving this about seventy-three.
And also, to add to that, independent of the fire protection and the rate that they give, is the, as Commissioner Tate mentioned earlier, your homeowner's, your insurance rate. When you look, what's going to happen is, when the substation is constructed, that Commissioner Tate was referring to on Cherrywood Drive, these properties are going to go from a class ten insurance rating to, if they lie in the, inside the six mile district, there will be a class five, is that correct, Commissioner Tate?
Or? If they're in the six, they'll be a class nine, if they're in the five, they'll be a class five.
If they're in the, if they're in the five mile district, they'll be a class five. And when you look at some of these properties, and in speaking with representatives from the Highlands Fire Department, you know, homeowners' insurance premiums, they estimate a thirty percent reduction in annual insurance premiums to all properties that come within this five mile district that will be set once the substation is put, is put in place.
And I think if everybody's reading between the lines here, these are not inexpensive properties.
One, some, one home in particular would save as much as six thousand dollars annually on a homeowner.
Can you even see what they're on, built the station?
It's like the manager said, this, this issue has actually been there for a long time, no one has, has recognized. And the property line, Rick, you asked the question, where the property line is exactly, there might be some debate over that, but if you look at these properties that lie in this area here, there's no, what do you call it, regress, there's no way to get out there into Jackson County. You can't do it, it's too, it's either too rough terrain, it's over cliff, through forest service land, so you have to go through Highlands to get there. So Commissioner Tate and I discussed it, you know, there's a combination of three options. They compensate us for the services. We say, we're not going to provide the services, which is the wrong thing to do, because if you don't do that, as a human being, you don't do that, you're providing, these people are calling for an ambulance, or calling for fire service, that's not a good answer. The answer was to redraw the county line, just put all the properties in Macon County. I'm not sure if Jackson County is going to do that. So we're trying to find some, I guess we're trying to find some middle ground that, is that fair, Chris?
Yeah, I think that's fair. If I could, Mr. Chairman, to speak a little bit, just one more thing, in finding this middle ground, I'd like to speak to the process that's been employed as we sought out these answers, and it, we've had meetings, Commissioner Tate set up a meeting with the homeowners of Wildcat Coops and Colles Asia Club, where representatives from Macon County, Commissioner Tate, myself, and the county manager and a representative, county, county manager and a county commissioner from Jackson County, sat down with these homeowners and discussed this issue. We discussed this issue with the Cashers Fire Department. We have, as Commissioner Tate alluded to, brought in our department heads, Chris Thaw, Mr. Warren Cave, our mapping department, to put this together, and they have coordinated efforts with Jackson County, who has provided us with their parcel information, which we overlay on the map. So it's, we left the discussion prior to this email that was sent on January sixth, two thousand and fifteen, after having gone through a very comprehensive and embedded this process to all parties involved, we left the conversation at, put us a number together. Jackson County had requested that, that Macon County provide them with a number, and as we continue to do research and look at this, again, as Commissioner Tate said, that number is around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, or thirteen percent of the one point two million projected revenue that Jackson County receives.
Derek, I'm sorry, I know we're talking about this a lot, I'm going to roll with that part of Derek and us conversation. I was wondering if we wanted to break this out tonight, especially if we could put some input in the rest of this board as well, so we can finally publicly discuss it as a, as a group, but I may mention to Derek, the rest of this board may feel differently, but I may mention to him that all we want to do is break even, we just want to be compensated fairly. We're not looking to make a profit off of Jackson County, Macon County, we just want to be compensated fairly, receive our fair share, it's very small percentage. Also, I may mention to Derek that I think it's a, a good gesture if Jackson County wanted to work with us, that we don't necessarily look at anything to buy gongs and passes. Thirty, fifty, every many years, Macon County's been doing this for Jackson County. Let's, let's try to get a resolution, start fresh, and hopefully they'll start offering the help of us to pay the services, these properties.
Anything else you have, colleagues?
Okay. Commissioner Tate, again, thanks for bringing our attention, Derek, thanks for working together as part of this public, we'll need to begin discussion with Jackson County. Commissioner Tate, take the lead on that.
Yes, sir. We have Christian Beale to go ahead and report on our rural school.
First of all, I'd say thank you, Commissioner Tate, this has been talked about over the past, I don't know how many years, but I mean, I did take all this work, so thank you, Commissioner Tate.
The chairman of the rest of the week in Jackson County, we'll get, we'll probably have a chance to discuss that. So Mr. Chairman, I did have a chance to do in Washington last Wednesday, Thursday and Friday by the invitation of the National Association of Counties, we had good meetings with Senator Byrd, he was very important to me. We did try to meet with Senator Tillis, of course, just to win on the future, but everybody in Senator Tillis's offices, people we know from Raleigh, that's all the people that worked in Senator Tillis's offices down in Washington, only had a good meeting with Congressman Madison. Three things he really talks about was the payment of lieu taxes, that's about seventy million dollars, that's about three hundred and eighty thousand to Macon County each year. That money has been included. The pill money, payment of lieu taxes, that money's secure. The real money that's not secure is secure rules, rural schools, and it's forestry part of that. That's where you get money for any forest products, it's taken. That's where you get money, uh, for any forest products is taken off the county land, you can so much more for it. To give you an idea, that's about one point five million dollars for the Macon County schools since nineteen, two thousand and six, topping out in two thousand and nine at two hundred and forty thousand, so it's, uh, it's, it's a good chunk of money, Chairman, as you know, as you were chairman of the group here. So, uh, it was expressed to us by several members, we talked to also Senator Maxon from West Virginia, several others, sixty percent of the counties in the United States come under some form of Pilk, payment of the taxes. And, uh, and they all get this, uh, uh, secure rural school money. So it is, uh, it's a big item. We hope to see them, Doug Tillis, the Pilk money in some form, that was one of the big subjects we talked about, because it can mean a lot to Macon County School. Uh, as you know, the school's coming back, the children don't have one million, and it's not a small sum of money that, so every daughter really cares, Mr. Chairman. So that was one subject. The next subject we talked about, which is Medicaid, uh, the legislature that takes up in Raleigh, uh, that's going to dominate, uh, the subject in Raleigh is Medicaid expansion or some form thereof, if they decide to do that. And Medicaid is important to our county, uh, it's a big, uh, it's a lot of money in our county, and that expansion, how they do it is very important. Uh, we're looking to change, we would like to see, some of us would really like to see a change in Medicaid waiver process, and we'll be talking about those things, but all in all, Mr. Chairman, we had, uh, a very good meeting with the Shanders and Congressman, and, uh, so, uh, we thought it was just some of the things we met on, and, uh, we had a good meeting. Uh, to change forces, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, also, we leave tomorrow for Moore County, uh, Sheila, myself, and the chairman, uh, it's our legislative goals conference in Moore County, they were going to put one of the goals submitted, including Macon County's goals, uh, that we will try to get through the legislature. Uh, it's going to be up to us this, in the next two or three days, to try to get that power down to five main goals. Uh, and, uh, we do have some work to do on that. Medicaid will dominate a lot of that discussion, as will non-moral unfunded mandates, such as passed down to our Health Department, this passage, and, uh, Fort Mill Hill is going to be one of the main topics, and, and school financing, and school, uh, and we want the form to change, so we accuse that money, that's one of the subjects, so don't ask me what that stands for, it's acronym for something. So, uh, so we'll be doing that, and with that, uh, we need, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you give me just a minute, we'd like to, we're going to need a voting delegate for our legislative goals, and, uh, and with that, uh, I would like to, Mr. Chairman, if you will, if you be willing to, I hope the delegate will, so I'll put that form of motion.
Motion, second, in discussion. If you're none, all in favor, say aye. Vote, that motion passes.
And then one last thing, if you ever want to find out how your county's doing or what NACO does for your county, every county in the United States is under NACO, uh, Macon County saved about a little over four hundred thousand dollars through the Duke Energy Program provided by NACO last year, so, uh, it's a worthwhile, uh, it's a worthwhile organization every county in the United States is, is our, if you want to look it up and see how we're doing on some things, we could probably utilize it more, uh, and we'll, uh, Mr. Chairman, have this discussion, and we will certainly try to, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll try to ask any questions about that. Those acronyms get confusing, NACO's National Association of Counties, if we're a member of that, which puts us in touch with national leaders also, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, NCACC, we're very active in that, Mr. Beal is actually our president of that organization, and he didn't tell you, he got to the White House this last week, asking the president, was there, he said, nothing at all.
And they had the motion on too? If you've got a cracked license, don't try to go back in.
Anyway, thank you, Commissioner Beal. But, uh, under, uh, whole business, we had, uh, Mr. Manager, we had an email poll, you might be sure, if you want to make a vote, Chris, can?
Yes, sir. Glad to have Mr. John Faith from the Nassau Department with us here. Do you recall, including your agenda packet along with, uh, the memorandum of understanding, which the email references? It is basically a memorandum of understanding between Macon County and the North Carolina Community Association. And basically through funds provided by Duke Energy's Helping Home Fund, Macon County will receive, will receive a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars from entering into this agreement. What will be, how these funds will be used, as I understand, and Mr. Faith, at any time you can jump in, these funds will be used to install energy efficient appliances and repair central heating and air systems in low income residents.
Yes, sir, and also, uh, the, uh, weatherization, we'll be able to provide several services that could use weatherization for low income.
Right, and then the, uh, as, as Mr. Faith said, this, the, the administration, I'd ask you a few questions as far as how, how would this be administered, are we actively, staffed, or the administration, can we do it, and you informed me that this actually mirrors the weatherization program.
It pretty much mirrors, there'll be some subtle differences, we have a meeting coming up, uh, this Thursday, the Greensburg, whichever orientation, this is really rapidly put together, um, and, uh, North Carolina Community Action Association is charging the possibility of seeing the funds distributed to the various providers, uh, and so the rules are, are still yet, and it's kind of developing as it goes, but, uh, we're securing the party.
And, uh, as Mr. Faith alluded to, this was rapidly put together, the reason that we conducted this by way of email polls, we actually didn't receive a copy of this memorandum of understanding until December twenty-second. This was the next time the board was able to get together, and the deadline for acceptance was January ninth. So upon receiving consensus from the board, went ahead and, and signed that, got it sent down, and now I will be looking, uh, for the board to ratify that action.
I would entertain a motion.
Motion to ratify that.
What motions, Mr. Shields, in discussion? If you're none, all in favor, say aye. If aye opposed, that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Manager. We have a right of way agreement with Duke Energy, which we have, uh, discussed some in the past, can you turn it?
It's actually, uh, a new one.
Okay, just to talk to you.
Yeah, this has to do not with Fort Meadows, but instead for the existing regression part, um, you have had, uh, the benefit of underground service at that park for a number of years. How old that park is, what is it, a burden?
I don't know.
You said before.
I think you said before, we picked it up raw for four years.
I don't know when that system went in, in the ground, but it's been there a long time, and to make long for short, uh, the county has expended some, uh, some substantial monies on, uh, making it work something out of Duke Energy for them to come in and replace those lines. The lines as they exist right now belong to the county, that system of the county, the Duke Energy is prepared to come in and put their own lines in, uh, and one of the pitfalls of that is that they maintain those, but they'll need an easement to do that. They have since was proposed easement, and I had looked at it with Steve Ledford, who's familiar with the wiring down there, as well as county manager, kind of drawl it up for what it's worth of any, if you want to look at it, but basically what you've got is virtually every bit of that is underground, okay? There is one small point where the, uh, let the power comes in above ground, and the fence is going to come in and fall, and that's why it's prepared, and other than that, it's underground. Uh, it's, they like, this is a really, uh, nice thing for the county and a benefit that the, uh, it's really working the county on, and I think it's a, it's a good thing. The, uh, each minute presented, I think, is acceptable, and I recommend that the board approve it.
Draft please. Your recommendation, I would, uh, any votes? Say, say, Mr. Shields, in discussion? If you're none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, that motion passes, you're unanimous. Um, under TNA, uh, increase in line of credit, Macon citizens' abilities, already that's here to build that up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I was, uh, were pleased, uh, pleased to have the director, Miss Gina Garrick, with Rob Ledford, City Director of the Department. I serve as liaison, uh, to this credit department. What they're asking from me, Mr. Chairman, is just basically an increase in the line of credit. Uh, as you can see in the letter, uh, they depend on reimbursement in the state, and sometimes that's not possible, and sometimes they can have two payroll, uh, before they get that reimbursement. So they had a hundred thousand dollars, uh, in a credit line, the bank has approved, and they would need to approve of this board to increase it to two hundred thousand. Uh, we just had a full audit not long ago of, of Macon citizens' abilities, of course, it was, uh, not only a good rating, but excellent rating. This department has run well, Mr. Chairman, as we all know, do a great service to citizens of Macon County, throughout their in Macon County, and, uh, so with that, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend approval of the extension of the credit line to the Macon citizens' abilities, I'm sure, uh, Miss Gary would fit with that translation.
We have a second motion for.
Let, let, let me jump in here, just to add a little bit of proposal, a little addition.
Easy, Jeff. You get paid by that.
Actually, they are desiring to get that, uh, increasing their line of credit and re-up on that line of credit. What they really need from the county is a subordination agreement, uh, they're authorized to borrow money without our permit, but in this particular case, the county made the deed to this organization, it was this property, and when the deed was made, there was a provision in there that basically provided that if the property should cease to be used for the purposes of this organization, then in that event, the property would basically come back to the county. And a lender basically will not agree to lend money on that property and let that property be used as security, unless they can let the county subordinate it.
Basically, what we're doing is voting to say that we, we stand behind.
Basically, that, that's correct, and, uh, Mr. Fred Jones, who represents the organization, can't prepare this in a measure, I've looked at it, and if the board is in agreement with the concept, this coordination agreement instantly will just pass.
So that could be a part of my motion, whether it was.
Would somebody second whatever Chester said? Second, Mr. Shields, in discussion? Again, this is not the county allocating any money, it's not us agreeing to pay any money, we're just agreeing to, I guess in theory, to back this line of credit, as the county. Any other discussion? If you're none, all in favor, say aye. If aye opposed, that motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Chester.
Any comments, Commissioner?
No, just thank you.
Appreciate it.
That would be a very much, yeah.
Thank you for what you do. Thank you, um, and a little man.
We have, uh, Mr. Chris Scott, Chris, glad to have you here. Chris is a solid waste director, does an excellent job. While he's been at, I'll say, again, we're usually in the top ten in the state in recycling, I'm not sure if we still are, is that?
Last report I saw.
Last report, so we do, uh, a decade of, uh, Macon County, uh, the last. So Chris has a request, of course, not Chris.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as you know, we've been in discussions, and, and not just in discussions, but laying the groundwork for, uh, development of future phases of, uh, MSW landfill in Macon County. Uh, part of that, part of that process is we're getting to the point now where we're actually wanting to develop, uh, a new landfill phase or something. And, um, obviously we will be needing the services of an engineering consultant to help us with this, uh, so we put out, uh, requests for qualifications in early December, uh, did the proper advertisement, solicited responses, uh, we received one response, um, we evaluated that response for completeness or responsiveness, um, I think, uh, one of the things I know is county manager, Lori, Lindsay, the first agency, and myself, uh, went through, uh, the R and Q and the response, and found it to be responsive, uh, and as it was the only response, uh, there wasn't a lot more to bear to, so, uh, what I would be asking, uh, the board, for this evening, um, and I'm sure I'll get the language from this chapter, but, um, to approve the firm, uh, as being qualified, uh, firm to do this work on the county's behalf, and then authorize, uh, myself and the county manager to enter in negotiations, uh, and get a contract with this firm, uh, to complete the work for designing construction, uh, of several.
I, I think you need to also find that they are a most qualified firm, that has an affirmative finding that's submitted, obviously, obviously, they're all.
Yes, sir.
Those are the only ones, I guess, though. That does need to be, so no money's in this stuff.
No. You know, I mean, in fact, it's not a form, we're, we're not even allowed to look at money.
The only thing that you can get at this particular stage that they're in right now are unit prices.
Does anybody have work on any of our land supersizing deals?
Not in the last twenty years.
Questions?
My recommendation is, yes, that we build with, build with Phil Associates. It's good much, yes. I've worked well.
I don't know, you don't have to pay the deal when they're with us.
I do when they're with the landfill, and I've, I've never choked them. I, I'm really, I've, we have had issues at other departments, but, uh, my history with the, the folks that I'll be working with on this project, uh, we, uh, they were working on the landfill before I was, so, uh, we, we worked well together, we've done a lot of projects together, I don't have any issues, uh, certainly with their qualifications or abilities, uh, successfully proceed with a perfect, uh, piece of work.
And that includes Chester, Rick, that kind of qualified, both of them, and to authorize these guys to proceed with negotiation. You accept that, Gary? Do you have a second to Gary's motion?
Yes.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any discussion? If you're none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, that motion passes. Thanks, sir. Thank you, Chris, and thank you for doing work on that. Uh, item, uh, TNC, the Ford Cave, uh, we wanted to talk about mutual aid agreement with Sky Valley, Georgia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, in your package, you should see a fairly typical, uh, mutual aid agreement between two local entities, in this case, this one is between Macon County and the city of Sky Valley, Georgia, and this just allows us to provide mutual, mutual aid emergency assistance between the two agencies. One of the things I want to bring your attention about, though, this one's a little different, uh, as opposed to some of the other that we've done, uh, speaking geographically, and to give a little background on why this actually started, that the conversation started on this back in two thousand and eleven, when I was here before, playing myself with the police chief there, and, and for those of you that aren't familiar with Sky Valley, Sky Valley is here, the city of Sky Valley's here, Sky Valley Town Hall is here, and the only way to get, to lead here and here is to drive through a significant portion of North Carolina. And we realized at the time, that, back in two thousand and eleven, the police department was training their staff, uh, don't worry, in the process, we're already training their staff to be medical responders, and we realized that in their travels back and forth daily from the office to the city, back and forth, they could be the first ones there for an accident or any kind of medical emergency, or anything else happened along that highway, and there was really no agreement to allow them to do anything. So in the process of several years worth of work, and Chester has dealt with attorneys, not just in this state, but in the great state of Georgia, uh, to draft this agreement, which allows them to function between the area and question there, which also covers us if we need to provide assistance to Sky Valley or vice versa, to provide assistance to us. So essentially, this has been embedded by all the parties involved, uh, including now it'll have to go, after we approve it, if we approve it tonight, it'll have to go and get over here, and of course, we have to work on the workshop, get their approval there. But essentially, we're requesting your approval tonight of this proposed mutual aid agreement between the city of Sky Valley and Macon County, uh, and also, if anybody has any questions, the maps were too large to put in the email, I have those here, if anybody would like to look at them.
Those maps are referenced in this, to this particular agreement, um, and those will need to, I guess, remain resident with, uh, Mr. Tate's office. They show the, the areas of service, uh, which can, that's a very important issue. I will say to you, I have made one, key tiny change to what's in your gym package, I noticed that the line on the very. I noticed that the line on the very last page says approve this the last, this the blank day of, blank month, 2014, now 2015, and as you'll note, the governor of this state has to approve it, so I made that change.
Well, this is a good one, right, but.
And law enforcement is separate, you have to have foreign officers in each of those areas, so basically, this cover, it's very specific here, emergency medical assistance, emergency aid tracking.
On both the telephone, seventy-two minutes.
That's actually a separate issue, but we're in the same situation with those folks that we've kind of described out on the catchers end, there's some folks there that have 526 exchanges, there's some folks there that have Georgia exchanges. We went through a process to hopefully route those to the right places, but we occasionally still have a crossing of those lines, we've never questioned or responded for, and we will go and ask questions later, and essentially, this helps cover the, the family of that.
I've read some of this, Sky Valley responds to a party in that area, and then, if Macon County arrives on the same, Macon County has to rely, or do they have to rethink it? Do they have to ask Sky Valley to step down to that time, or is it up to whoever it is from the county, if they still need assistance, or is it automatic?
From a legal perspective, it's still going to be our responsibility, in a world of instant command, we can let them continue to function, as long as we're still going to assume responsibility, but responsibility is still going to be ours.
And you're comfortable with that?
Yes.
Mr. Beal? I'll be right back. And this basically says, we'll help them, they'll help us. You should, you should read this, it's very handy, Chester.
It absolutely is, and I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to let you know that there were some attorneys in Georgia that worked for Sky Valley, that helped in the system, getting the document in order, and maybe a good job helping me with the app of Georgia code, what we had to do, the challenge that we had is North Carolina authorizes these types of agreements subject to certain terms of conditions, and Georgia does the same, certain terms and conditions, and we had to, we had to get them to blend together, and it took some, and there's nobody to change. We have them, if they have.
Second. Your motion second, the resolution as presented, with date changed to 1415. Any discussion? We have a governor, we signed it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren.
We have the public health fee schedule changes, Jim Rutter.
It was my understanding that he wasn't going to do that. Mr. Rutter's not here, items 10D and 10E will both want to be presented by Mr. Rutter. I think a little bit of you think, both of these items, it's my understanding, and maybe the liaison, Mr. Hayden, could speak to it, it's my understanding that these fee schedule increases and the bad debt that was written off have been approved by the Board of Health, and I think Mr. Rutter was submitting this to the Board for information purposes.
The fee changes, I think, are something that you do need to, and the reported part of that, bad debt, I don't think that's something for reservation.
The leader of the five vaccines, they're increasing four to five. Increasing the cost on building, but the cost of materials, so that thing, when it's discussed, will help approve the increase, and I wish to do the same on that debt and fee increases.
The motion second, in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we have consent agenda, the front of you, that contains the minutes of this night reading, that relates to 107, 101 to 107, tax leases, tax repayment, plan for tax related support, these items are generally not discussed unless the board determines to remove them from consent agenda. Does any board member want to remove any of those items, or would you be motion to approve as presented?
Motion approved.
Thank you, sir. Second, Mr. Shields, in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion passes. Couple of other items to claim our attention, the report, which we have the Joint Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care, we have three seats. Management will discuss.